Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order the January 6, 2016 meeting of the Frederick County Planning Commission. And I would ask that you join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. We have an agenda to approve.
Madam Chairman, move for adoption of the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Our second item is the election of officers, meeting schedule, adoption of bylaws and other sundry things.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. Consistent with previous years, at the first meeting of every year for the Planning Commission, staff leads the election of the chairman of the Planning Commission and the vice chairman for the 2016 calendar year. So I'll go ahead and jump right into it. For the chairman of the Planning Commission for the 2016 calendar year, do we have any nominations?
I nominate June Wilmot for the chairman for the 2016 Planning Commission year.
Second.
Do we have any other nominations?
Move the nominations.
Second.
All those in favor of June Wilmot for chairman, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Congratulations. Moving on to vice chairman, do we have any nominations?
Nominate Roger Thomas.
Do we have any other nominations?
Move the be closed.
Second.
All those in favor of Roger Thomas for vice chairman, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Congratulations. That all turn it back over to Chairman Wilmot.
I think also, we need Candace to elect a secretary.
Correct. Staff usually doesn't lead the secretary portion of it, so you may proceed with that portion.
Okay, great. Thank you. Then, we will proceed to do that. Are there any nominations for secretary?
Nominate Chris Tierney.
Second.
Any other nominations?
Move the nominations be closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Thank you so much for helping us out.
The second portion of the agenda is the adoption of the meeting schedule for 2016. That is laid out in the memo for the Planning Commission meetings. It's the first and third Wednesdays of each month at 7:00 PM, and then with the inclement weather.
On Thursday.
Yes, ma'am.
Move for adoption of the meeting schedule.
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And for the, the next is the committee assignments for 2016.
Also, we will approve the meeting schedule for them, and that is, Comprehensive Plans and Programs Committee will meet on the second Monday of each month at 7:00 in the first floor conference room.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. And what we are going to do today, because of our, if you will, our changes that are coming along, rather than my asking you individually if you'd like to continue to serve, I'm going to be bold and nominate you for those committees, and if you, if you would like to have me change my mind, I'm delighted to do it, if you, if you would speak to me. But for comp plans, I'm going to nominate Gary R. Oats from the Planning Commission from Stonewall, Rhodes Marston, Planning Commission Member, Back Creek District, Paige Manuel, Planning Commission Shawnee District, Robert S. Molden, Planning Commissioner of Opeckin District, Roger Thomas, ex officio, and I am ex officio also to that committee. And Chuck, finishing up with Chuck Dunlap, not last. I'm sure you're okay with that.
Yes.
Okay. Well, let's go on to the Development Review and Regs committee, meets on the fourth Thursday of each month at 7:00 PM in the first floor conference room, and we need to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
All opposed? Thank you. Comp plan, excuse me, the Development Review has 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 Planning Commission members, Greg Unger from the Back Creek District, Kevin Kenny, Gainesboro District, Gary Oats from Stonewall District, Larry Ambroci from the Shawnee District, and both Mr. Thomas and I serve ex officio on that committee. Okay. The next thing that we need to do is committee assignments for, excuse me, are the liaison assignments, and what I'm going to suggest is those who have served in those roles continue on, and for the Transportation Committee, Mr. Gary Oats. Historic Resources Advisory Board is a little different in that their activity has not been large, and so what I've done is asked some of you to attend and report to us when they do meet, and I'm going to suggest we just rotate as we see those meetings come on the agenda or not. And those that have helped in this past year, I remember who you are, so I'll be looking at some of those that, that might be able to help us for this next year. They do meet the third Tuesday of the month at 6:00 PM, which is kind of nice. And I'm delighted to nominate Charles Triplet again to serve on the Conservation Easement Authority. We're delighted to see him back amongst us. And Mr. Greg Unger from the Frederick County Sanitation Authority, and Kevin Kenny from, for the Winchester Planning Commission. And I'm grateful for you all doing what you do. It's important to the work that we get done. Okay. And the last thing we have to do is the Planning Commission and bylaws for 2016. You've seen these before.
Yes. The bylaws in front of you mirror the ones that were discussed and reviewed at your December 2nd meeting. There have been no changes to that, as well as the roles and responsibilities document.
Yes. So, we need to approve them.
Move for approval of the bylaws.
And roles and responsibilities.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you all very much for business in, and thank you, Ms. Perkins, for helping out. Okay. The next item is, let me get back to my agenda, is committee reports, and let's see, Comprehensive Plans and Programs. I'm going to ask Mike Ruddy to speak about our meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The Comprehensive Plans and Programs Committee met on December the 14th. Their one item was the Capital Improvement Plan. The CPBC reviewed that and endorsed it and found it in conformance with the county's comprehensive plan, and we'll be discussing that later this evening.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Unger from, for the Sanitation Authority?
December 22nd, the first thing we talked about was the quarries. All the quarries are recharging very well. The elevations are actually come up since last month, so they're very happy about that. We did use 4.8 million gallons a day, or the month before, we used 5.6 million, 6 gallon a day, which is considerable less than what we were doing, but the quarries are holding up good, and everybody was real happy about that. The other thing we've done, we've got a new planning committee, which Gary Oats kind of kicked off for us, and it's been working very well, and we've got some things we're working on. We're trying to find some more water in the county. And we reviewed subdivisions, and we're trying to get the water and sewers put in the right of ways instead of out in against the houses, so we don't have to tear up yards when we have to work on them, and it's, well, it's less stressful to the maintenance department. So, and we're going to ductile iron instead of PVC, so hopefully that'll be a lot less problems in the future. That hasn't been finalized yet, but it should be the next month or two. And the other thing, we had Jesse Moffett come in from Opeckin Waste Water District and, or Waste Water Plant, and we've got an outstanding plant down there now. They've redone that plant, and it's going to be pretty much efficient serving their own electric. You know, they won't be buying electric down there in the very near future. And they're actually requesting stronger waste, like from these food companies, Hood Craft and Hershey, they're wanting their waste now because they got the facilities to take care of it, and the water to run back in the creek is very, very pure. So we're trying to get Hood, we're going to try to get Hood down that way, so, because Hood puts a lot of strain on our plant in Parker's Mill, and if we can get it to the Opeckin District, it's going to be a lot better for the county, so we're also working on that, too.
So, thank you. Thank you very much. Dr. Phoe, from the City of Winchester Planning Commission.
Thank you. Planning Commission met in a work session yesterday and reviewed two rezoning, rezoning requests and two conditional use requests prior to our meeting of the night, of this month, on the 19th. Of significance is the ordinance to rezone 0.13 acres at 18 East Clifford Street from RB1 to B1. There's a building there that will be demolished in preparation for a erection of a multifamily dwelling. And the, the other rezoning request was in reference to the hospital completing a series, its purchase of a series of lots along the west side of Linden Drive.
Thank you, sir.
That concludes my report, Madam Chairman.
Thank you so much. Thanks for being with us. And from the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Hess?
Yes, Madam Chairman. You may recall at the last meeting, I had virtually nothing to report, and I think I'm going to make up for it tonight. Since the last Planning Commission meeting, the Board of Supervisors met on Wednesday, December the 9th. Not only, excuse me, did we have a full agenda, including four public hearings for four rezoning applications, we were also pleased to approve a resolution of appreciation for Eric Lawrence's service to the county as planning director. The first public hearing was a rezoning 09-15 Artillery Business Center in the Back Creek District to revise proffers associated with rezoning 07-08. And as you know, this revision related specifically to the transportation proffers. The properties are located on Shady Elm Road. This was a continuation of a public hearing from October 28th, from the October 28th board meeting, and also a postponement from the November 12th board meeting. The Planning Commission's public hearing for this rezoning was held on October 21st. Additional information and updated proffers regarding revenue sharing funds and acquisition of the right of way for Renaissance Drive were presented immediately prior to the Board of Supervisors meeting. There were no public comments, and the rezoning passed unanimously. The next public hearing was rezoning 07-15 Woodside Land Company to rezone 20 acres on Woodbine Road in the Stonewall District from RA to M2 with proffers. The public hearing had been continued from November 12th, when the board tabled and agreed to continue the public hearing. Prior to the board meeting, two proffers were added, one for signalization of the intersection at Woodbine Road and Route 11, and the second to prohibit certain uses otherwise permitted in M2. Following public comments, the rezoning passed unanimously. Then there was a public hearing for rezoning 06-15 Opeckin Crossing to revise and combine proffers associated with rezoning 04-07 and rezoning 12-07. This revision related specifically to the monetary transportation credits. The properties are located south of Route 7, adjacent to Opeckin Creek in the Red Bud District. There were no public comments, and the, this rezoning also passed unanimously. And the final public hearing was for rezoning 10-15 Heritage Commons to rezone 96 acres from B2 to R4 with proffers, and 54 acres from RP to R4 with proffers, and 0.31 acres from RA to R4 with proffers. The properties, as you all know, are located west of the intersection of Route 522 and Airport Road in the Shawnee District. Information presented to the board, in addition to what was presented to the Planning Commission on November 18th, when the Planning Commission recommended approval, included the addition of an Navigation Easement and clarification of the right of way for Warrior Drive and responsibility for revenue sharing funds. Following public comment, the rezoning was approved unanimously, and this certainly concluded a long drawn-out process for development of what we generally referred to as the Russell 150 Project. Other planning items, in addition to rezoning, the rezoning public hearings, the last planning item was the subdivision request for Regent's Crest, which was presented to the board just for information. Before I conclude my report, I'd just like to mention that prior to adjournment at the board meeting, the board took special note of the long service to the county by outgoing Chairman of the Board of Supervisors, Richard Schickel, as that was his last meeting as supervisor and chairman. The Board of Supervisors passed a resolution acknowledging his many contributions to the county and its citizens, and I personally believe that the county is a better place to live, and its citizens are better off as a result of Mr. Schickel's dedication to his duties and responsibilities. And one final note, this will likely be my last Planning Commission meeting as board liaison, as I believe that at our organizational meeting next Wednesday, it is incoming Chairman DeHaven's intent to appoint new supervisor Blaine Dunn to this position. I believe Mr. Dunn is in the audience this evening. Over the almost three years that I have been the liaison and attended these meetings, I've had an opportunity to appreciate and respect the knowledge and experience of the members of the commission, and really appreciate the outstanding job you do and the commitment you make. I want to thank you for the insight and guidance that you and your work have given me. You've made my job as a supervisor easier, and I hope it has enabled me to be, to better represent the interests of the citizens of Frederick County. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Chair, we thank you very much for the two years that you spent with us. It's been a delight, and hopefully we've learned from each other. So, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. I think we are concluded with the reports. Let's get on to our agenda. We have a public hearing. It's rezoning 12-15 Crosspoint Center, submitted by Panoni Associates, to rezone 58.30 acres from RP Residential Performance District to B2 General Business District, and 72.47 acres from B2 General Business District to RP Residential Performance District, with Crosspoint Center Development rezoning 1303, and to amend the proffers associated with the rezoning 1303. The properties are located to the east of and adjacent to the I-81 exit 310 interchange and adjacent to Tasker Road and Hillendale Lane. The properties are identified with property identification numbers 75-A-89, 75-A-89A, 75-A-91, 75-A-92, 75-A-95, 75-A-96, and a portion of 75-A-90, and 75-A-94 in the Shawnee Maggert Stearle District. Mr. Ruddy?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Before I-
Madam Chair, I will need to recuse myself from this item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Second, Mr. Kenny. Before I begin, we do have the citizen comment section of the agenda that we should get into, so thanks for that introduction. I'll just take a moment and sit to the side and come right back up.
Thank you very much. And this is, forgive me if you've got a comment to make, I've just flown right past you, and I, I'm sorry for that. After committee reports, we're happy to accept citizen comments on any subject that you consider important for the Planning Commission, except for this public hearing and an information item for the commission itself. So, are there any citizen comments? Seeing none, we will motor on, and we'll move on to Crosspoint. Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome, Jim. Thank you very much. I'll summarize that introduction, and just recognize that the, this rezoning request is to rezone 58 acres from the RP District to B2 District, and 72 acres from the B2 District to the RP District. Now, this acreage is within the Crosspoint Center Development, 524 acres that was rezoned back in 2004, and rezoning application 1303. So again, this request that we have in front of us this evening is to adjust the acreage and location of some of the commercial and residential zoning districts, and to amend the proffers associated with that. So I'll walk us through the application, along with Mr. Bishop here, and we'll hopefully hit the highlights for you before we turn it over to the applicant. On the screen to your left, and also as part of your agenda, the applicant provided a meets and bounds description with some color coding to hopefully make it a little easier, as you read your agenda, to identify those areas that are changing from the B2 to the RP, and vice versa, from the RP to the B2 District. Using our own location maps, of course, we're familiar with the property, quite familiar because it's at the intersection of Route 37 and 81, at interchange 310 on Interstate 81. It's all of the property, if you will, immediately to the east of the intersection and the improvements that we see today going on there. The property today, as I mentioned, is currently zoned RP and B2. Looking at the future land use plan, we recognize this as a prime location, a prime location for commercial and residential land uses in some form of mixed environment. So it's recognized that the application itself, as it was approved back in 2004, and as presented here today, includes a generalized development plan that is generally consistent with the land use plan that we have in, in this area of the county. That generalized development plan, I'll run through very briefly here in a moment, but to recognize that it identifies and kind of reinforces the applicant's three-phase approach to this development, which is maintained from the original development. Now, one of the bigger changes with this request is that a greater amount of development is actually proposed within Phase 1 than was proposed initially. That increased development basically is about 120,000 additional square feet of commercial land use, totaling 1,088,000. That gives the applicant the ability to develop up to that amount. In addition, the residential development component is 1,578 units, exactly the same as what was previously proposed, with one small change, which I'll touch on here in a moment. There is no defined mix of residential units in this current proposal as there was previously. On the screen to your left is the applicant's generalized development plan, or the overview part of it, which shows the project as a whole, again, identifying the phasing, identifying the locations of the commercial and residential land base, and probably most significantly with this request, identifying the transportation improvements associated with the development and in support of the development. Further, the application is broken down to show Phase 1, which is on the screen to your left, and you can see it's a heavier phase, or a heavier part of the development that was previously, excuse me, than is currently in place. Phase 2 is in the northeastern portion of the property, on the eastern side of Future Warrior Drive. Phase 3 is on the southern portion of the property, south of Future Route 37. The generalized development plan also includes a, an exhibit that highlights their open space connections, stream buffer preservation areas, and a couple of historic locations, historic park sites. As I mentioned, the commercial and residential zoning proposed is consistent with the current land use that is supported and identified in the comprehensive plan. The original rezoning was, and this current one that is being proposed, remains consistent. So this point where I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bishop, as we discuss the impacts associated with the request, but it's important to point out that the application demonstrates that the transportation improvements will be in place to support the additional development. Some VDOTs expressed their approval of the revised proffers to ensure that those improvements will be secured. So at this time, let Mr. Bishop go into the transportation component in more detail.
Not too much more detail, though. Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the commission. As Mr. Ruddy noted, I'm going to try and take you through some of the transportation. However, as we're all aware, not myself nor the majority of you were on the commission when this was rezoned the first time, so I'm going to try and draw a 30,000-foot historical line of where, where we are currently, in terms of what's on the books, what was done back in the early 2000s, and on through up to what's being proposed today. So in terms of what you currently have on the books, you have a three-phase transportation proffer. You have right of way dedication for exit 310, which of course is under construction now. You have relocation of Tasker and Hillendale, which Mike referenced earlier and showed you on the GDP. You have the extension of Tasker over to Warrior Drive, which of course doesn't exist in that location right now, today. And you have construction of Route 37, and I've underlined it on your slide, as a boulevard, not as Route 37 limited access. When that was rezoned, the applicant was going to be able to build that as a boulevard, even with some entrance access and those sorts of things, and then at such time as the county or the state were able to come and construct Route 37, basically that roadway would be fully reconstructed as a limited access highway, and those access points that were allowed under the current proffers would go away. Now, time passed. The market didn't ripen, and we get to around 2010, Governor McDonnell funds the exit, Phase 1 of the exit 310 improvements, which is what you see under construction today. That's the widening of the ramps, which leaves room for the eventual cloverleafs, which you're not seeing as part of today's construction. Well, widening those ramps triggers something very key. It triggers the need for the relocation of Tasker Road and Hillendale Lane to make room for that widening. So now we need to exercise that proffer to get that right of way, and what's more, those specific items, that relocation of Tasker Road and Hillendale Lane, were previously proffered as part of Crosspoint's Phase 1 proffered improvements. So significant value there. That is not a cheap construction project. So, on top of the fact that we needed to go ahead and call in that right of way, we had to have an additional conversation of, okay, how do we recruit some of that value now of what was previously proffered, but the state now has to build in order to be able to do this project that the governor has just funded? That's where the tri-party agreement comes in, that you may have heard referenced in your discussions with the applicant, or just through time here on the Planning Commission. What that was, was to try and connect those disconnects. So what you have under the tri-party agreement, VDOT builds exit 310, VDOT now realigns Tasker Road and Hillendale Lane, and also relocates a fairly significant water main through that area. Crosspoint continues to dedicate the right of way. Crosspoint now builds Route 37 to a limited access standard. That's a significant difference from a boulevard. And Crosspoint builds bridges over Tasker, which they would not have previously needed to do when building cross 37 as a boulevard. So that's where some of that value comes back in, to try and balance out what was taking place without holding up our 310 project. Now we get to today. We still have a three-phase transportation proffer. Phases are not exactly the same, because these folks are not building Hillendale and Tasker anymore. However, they have broken the other improvements into three phases, the extension of Tasker Road over to Warrior Drive. Warrior Drive construction itself, Route 37 to the limited access standard, as I mentioned earlier, bridges over Tasker Road, and demolition of the temporary ramps. And my final bullet is they've agreed to do a traffic impact analysis at 370,000 square feet of development. Because as Mr. Ruddy noted earlier, the really key difference, at least from my perspective and transportation impact perspective, from what you have on the books today to what's being proposed, is that heck of a lot of commercial has been moved from being broken up into three phases and brought all into Phase 1. However, early on, early versions of the proffers, VDOT, myself, were getting pretty uncomfortable because those additional road improvements, the Tasker Road extension, the Warrior Drive, the construction of Route 37, were still, for the most part, tied to Phases 2 and 3. So we're really concerned that the Phase 1 improvements, which have largely been taken on by VDOT, were not going to address the traffic of that 960,000 square feet. If you rewind to what we have on the books today, the original TIA envisioned 370,000 square feet of commercial development for the Phase 1 transportation improvements. So to sort of get us over that hurdle, what the applicant has agreed to do in their proffers is, once they've hit 370,000 square feet of development, of commercial development within that Phase 1 transportation, Phase 1 development scheme for transportation improvements, they will do a TIA, and as called for before proceeding, they're going to make sure that things work before moving on beyond that 370,000 square feet. So that's why you have the- So, that's why you have the positive comment from VDOT. That's why you don't have me up here, you know, pounding on the wood, because they connected those two things enough to make us comfortable with that. That doesn't mean necessarily that they've dealt with all of Mr. Ruddy's stuff, which I'm going to stay out of, but in terms of connecting all the dots, I hope I've done that for you. I'm going to go ahead and transition back to Mr. Ruddy, and of course, we're going to have plenty of opportunity for questions as well, if you want to ask me something now.
Before you sit down, if possible. Mr. Bishop, do you think, do you consider it comparable value of having VDOT do the work at interchange 310 to what the developers offered for going to a limited access for 37 and the bridges?
Yeah, when we went through it back in, you know, 2010, 2011, doing the tri-party agreement, everybody agreed that it was fairly comparable. I mean, to be honest, it's still a bit of a finger-in-the-air exercise, but that upgrade to build those bridges, to go from a boulevard to construction of a limited-access piece of roadway, we definitely felt like that balanced it out. Frankly, not to be hard on VDOT, but everything they do costs more than if somebody else does it. But yes, we felt like, we felt like we got our value back, frankly.
Because when I looked at the price of what that interchange work is compared to what I kind of just took swag at for the other work, it seemed like that VDOT was kicking in a lot more than what we were getting back out of the developer.
I feel like on an apples-to-apples, and it's very hard to do an apples-to-apples comparison because we're projecting what we think it might cost them. Myself and VDOT felt like we were doing about as well as we could do in terms of the trade-offs.
Okay. My other question, Warrior Road.
Sir.
It doesn't appear that we're getting much of Warrior Road, from what I can tell. And quite honestly, reading the transportation proffers was a little difficult. It would have been a whole lot easier if it would have been on a map that we could follow through. So, are we getting any of Warrior Road at all, or are we just getting a right-of-way?
No, we're getting a significant portion of Warrior Road. Now, the connections to the south and to the north, basically, I don't want to mess Mike up here, but I'm going to try and scroll back to the GDP. Those connections, for example, M to N and L, or I'm sorry, K to L on up toward the north side there, those aren't coming until something seems to be happening to the south and the north. But all that from K to M, that comes as part of Phase Two.
We're not getting M to N as part of Phase Three?
That is part of Phase Three.
Phase Three.
I'm saying the K to M is part of Phase Two, M to N is part of Phase Three. But that doesn't actually get connected to anything until there's something to connect to.
South of it.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Bishop at the moment? Yes, sir.
Thank you, John. And of course, transportation is a huge part of this, so hopefully that addressed most of the comments. But when we look at the additional impacts associated with it, usually we look at community facilities, development impact model values, and the approach taken to mitigate those, consistent with what occurred in 2003, 2004. This application recognizes that the development impact model, residential units do have an impact, but the commercial component has a vast impact on it, too. And as was determined with the initial rezoning, that was a net positive, a significant net positive. So, the applicant's approach, of course, in this one is to recognize that with the additional commercial square footage, the commercial revenue would more than offset the residential units, as was previously initially approved. I point that out because obviously we have an additional 120,000 square feet of commercial opportunity on this side, but when we look at the residential units out of the 1,578, initially 200 were profited as age-restricted. That age restriction, restriction, has been lifted, and therefore there's the potential that there are 200 additional units as part of that 1,500 that may generate greater community facility impacts. So, again, I think the applicant's approach is recognized, and the commercial value of this development to the county certainly was recognized before and has continued to be so. The original proffer statement did include one proffer that addressed the dedication of an area for government services, when we look at, again, mitigating the impact to the community and future community needs, in addition to the needs generated by this project. I point that out because that proffer's been modified from a dedication of nine acres to government services to a reservation of an area within a specific location, again, Phase One commercial. But the change from dedication to reservation is one that I should point out, and ultimately the county should determine if that modified approach is acceptable. Okay. We're at the point where John and I have hopefully given a decent overview of the project and hit on a couple of the issues and the impacts. I will point out that, of course, one additional comment that we had, review letter, was provided by Mr. Rod Williams, the county attorney. We do have a copy of that, should you need it. It identified several comments at the beginning of the week, all of which that the applicant is willing to address and has drafted up a draft to do so already. So, that's available, should we need it. But at this point, be happy to answer any questions the Commission may have, and to recognize that Mr. John Foote is here this evening, representing the application.
Questions? Mr. George?
Mr. Ruddy, one about the reservation for government services. So, prior, or before, it was a dedication, so it was given to the county. So, with the reservation, does that mean we have to pay for it, they're just reserving an area that we can buy?
The reservation area is located in Phase One commercial, but that's the level of detail to which the proffer states. So, the details are wide open, and the reservation would typically put the county in a position of negotiating that in the future.
And before, it looked like if we didn't take that, there was a $200,000, I guess, trade-off, if we're not taking this land. And that's been removed now?
That's correct.
Okay. So, before, we either got 200,000 or we were given nine acres. Now, it's, they're reserving nine acres that we can possibly purchase.
That's correct.
Mike, did that nine acres turn out to be five acres because they had to take more land for the ramps? Or did I misread that?
Actually, that's a slightly different component because there are two historical parks, historical sites, and one historical site around the Hillendale House. For some reason, I apologize, that was my iPad. It's not going to work. The, I'll draw your attention to that, Mr. Marsden, right here. The historic park that's identified immediately adjacent to the ramps for the improvements to interchange at 310, that was a five-acre site. Initially, it's reduced to a three-acre site because of the right-of-way that was needed associated with the project.
Mr. Thomas?
This original rezoning was done back in 2003, 2004. The impact model was much different then than it is now. If we ran it under the current model, would the monetary contributions that they're providing be similar or be adequate with our current model, or would it be fairly different?
Excellent question. I think it would most likely be a little different from where it was before, but I would estimate that the commercial contribution would still turn out to be a positive. However, having said that, it's important to recognize that we don't run the development impact model when we compare the residential to the commercial. The Board of Supervisors' policy is to recognize that each residential unit today generates 13, 15,000, whatever that number actually is, per unit. So, the applicant then has to demonstrate why their project would provide that offset, if you will. So, Board policy currently is to recognize each residential unit has a monetary value based on the impact, and the applicant has the opportunity to demonstrate how that may be mitigated through the commercial component of their project. I think it would be similar, but it likely would be different. I think initially, there was basically a $20 million impact and a $29 million credit. So, it came out. It was a different model at the time, but it came out definitely very positive.
Okay. The, originally, there was a little more specificity on the housing types. Now, it's kind of wide open on the housing type. Does that cause staff any concern?
No, it certainly doesn't cause staff any concern. Again, the applicant is proposing a monetary contribution in the amount of $3,000 per residential unit. Initially, excuse me, on the original rezoning, they had a requirement, they would put in a certain number of single-family detached units. But given the location, certainly the flexibility in the housing types is completely appropriate.
So, it'll come out to be what the market will bear. The original prohibited garden apartments, I don't see any verbiage like that in this. Could they, they could build apartments?
They could build any housing type that the RP District would allow. That's correct.
We know if they, well, okay, I'll ask the applicant.
So, again, there's no defined mix of residential units in this particular request. Gives them the ability to do anything in the RP. It also gives them the ability to do age-restricted, should they choose to do so.
Now, could, can they use the commercial with the housing over the commercial also?
That's an overlay district that hasn't been identified with this particular request, so they would not be able to do that based on this current application. The location would enable them to do that, should they choose to pursue that in the future.
Any other questions, Mr. Ruddy or Mr. Bishop, at this time? Any? All righty. Mr. Foote?
Playing World of Warcraft here.
Just putting a pretty picture up for you.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. My name is John Foote Walsh Calucci, and as I said to you earlier when I first got here, it's such a pleasure to be back in my favorite Virginia jurisdiction. I did some math, Madam Chairman, and I first started working in this. Little old boy from Prince William County has actually been working in this fair county for 26 years. This is my 26th year of coming out and having projects in this village. And I will say that one of the things, as I look around the Commission, I notice is that apparently you moved straight from here to the graveyard because many of you have been on the Commission almost as long as I've been working out here. Some of you used to be the county attorney back in the day. I just see names and faces that I have known for longer than any of you want to admit. In fact, several, I was talking earlier about how we didn't have gray hair when we started doing this stuff, and now we do. As you know, I represent Glaze Investments, and I believe you know the team, as it were. These are not unfamiliar faces to you. Ron Maslowski here, of course, Patrick Sowers, who will be helping me here with any kind of detailed technical questions you have, and of course, JP Carr. The reason that we're here is not at all surprising, and that is that, in its infinite wisdom, VDOT came up with the money to build the 310 interchange, or certainly the first phase of the 310 interchange. That is a hugely costly expenditure of public money. It was actually driven not by this development, as you well know, but by the needs of the 310 interchange itself, Tasker and the extraordinary traffic count that we discovered even 12 years ago when we started this, extraordinary number of vehicles on Tasker, which is a road hardly designed or built to handle that traffic. So, consequently, VDOT has come through with its first phase of its development. Well, what that did, obviously, was to take off of the back of the development here, the upfront costs of some major road improvements that would be very difficult to finance upfront. Over time, of course, as the project development develops, that becomes different, but when you're having to pay for it at the get-go, it's very difficult for you to administer or to handle that. So, VDOT has come in and done it, and that's led Glaze, JP, and Fred to contemplate what differences there might be in the marketplace today and what they anticipate to occur that we didn't necessarily know or think about back in those days. And although this is probably one of the largest rezonings in Frederick County, certainly in recent memory, although I guess, my goodness, I go back to Lake Frederick days, the, when you think about where things are located, they made a conclusion that they had misallocated where some of the residential and commercial should be relatively located one to the other, and that it made far more sense to move commercial development up to a greater level of visibility and access from the interstate as the project develops over time. So, that sent the team into overdrive with respect to how that might be done. It also presented an opportunity, because of the way the property lays out, to increase the amount of commercial development that would be permissible. Well, as Mr. Ruddy and Mr. Bishop have told you, the changes are actually rather remarkably small in this, and Patrick Sowers will be willing to go into some detail on it, but he's correct to say that one of the things that we've done here is simply move commercial from the back to the front here. We have changed the, we have done away with the mandatory assisted living facility or age-restricted housing, made that a market option, still there, and it's still defined in the proffers, but it's a market option now. And a couple of other relatively minor changes to what has been proposed before. A couple of observations to make about that, however, goes back to the traffic matter that was discussed before, and Mr. Sowers, again, can give you more detail. But one of the specific things to observe, and Mr. Bishop didn't exactly point this out, but I will hear, and that is the 370,000 square feet relate very strongly to G, Point G. I believe you're aware that VDOT is constructing these temporary ramps here, which will get you down to Tasker, because when this project is ultimately built out, those ramps won't be there. And in order to get into the commercial area here, you will literally have to come in here and around, because that will be a straight shot through, as it was discussed by Mr. Bishop about how this road project, the design of it, has worked over time. It's always been generally contemplated that way, but the tri-party agreement shifts a good deal of the future cost from VDOT off to the applicant, and it's one of the reasons we think there, it's kind of apples-to-apples in that regard. Those must ultimately go away. And so, when we met with VDOT, and I won't belabor this too much, we met with VDOT on the original proffers as we drafted them and submitted them to the county in connection with this proffer condition amendment application, the shift of the commercial forward gave VDOT and Mr. Bishop concerned that we were going to be overloading that intersection too soon. And not to put it too bluntly, but VDOT has, I think, a legitimate concern, VDOT and the county have a legitimate concern, is if this area here melts down, then you're going to have people backing up to Steven City trying to get in here. And that's not tolerable to you, it's not tolerable to VDOT, and it's not tolerable to the applicant here. It doesn't do any good for the development of this property for that to be the case. So, in discussions with VDOT, and we met with them down in Edinburgh not too long ago, going back to what Mr. Bishop said, the original TIA study, we will re-study this at 370,000 square feet of development of the potential, however many, hundreds of thousands of square foot, feet that are now possible in Phase One. And at that point, there's going to have to be another analysis as to whether those things are functioning or not, and how they might be improved. And there could be a number of ways they might be improved at that time. Nobody has to guess that now, but the point is, it has to be studied at that point before development can go beyond it. And with that agreement between Glaze and VDOT and the county, VDOT announced that it was satisfied, and you've heard from Mr. Bishop already, that that's going to be the trigger that protects that road connection and protects the 310 interchange. In my judgment, for all the years of doing this, I would say that was always, from the get-go, the critical question that had to be answered, as to how you handled the shift in that, even though, interestingly enough, and it was an issue we had with VDOT in discussing it initially, and that is that the actual traffic flow is essentially the same, whether the commercial's in the back or in the front. So, it wasn't clear to us why there was additional impact at that intersection now. VDOT was concerned, and to Glaze's credit, Glaze said, okay, we get it, and we will do the study. I don't know that I need to do a great deal more to surprise or to explain what we've been talking about, because Mr. Ruddy did an excellent job. Mr. Sowers, do you want to add anything to what we've done here with, between me and Ruddy babbling on here? Okay. All right. Madam Chairman, we'll be happy to answer any questions you have. There may well be some about, for example, the dedication versus reservation. Happy to do that, ma'am.
Yes. Any questions to Mr. Foote? Thoughts, comments? Yes. Mr. George?
Yeah. Since you brought up the reservation, dedication, why the switch?
The, well, a couple of reasons for that, Madam Chairman, the one of which is the dedication provision in the original proffers was actually time-limited and expired many years ago. It was a five-year limitation on the dedication if the county requested it. No request was ever made. Of course, the reason it wasn't made, I'm sure, is because you couldn't get there then either, you know, you had to wait to get the roads developed. But the other reason that we've gone to a reservation of it as opposed to dedication has to do with what VDOT requested of Glaze as a consequence of its design of the 310 interchange. It's taken a substantially larger amount of right-of-way off of this project than was originally anticipated. Well, as you might imagine, this is a superb location in this county, and that land will one day be extremely valuable, and the concern was that the applicant was not recovering that value in some way. And so, consequently, rather than making it an absolute dedication, it is a reservation for acquisition at this point because of the need to recapture some of the lost land value.
Anyone else? Mr. Thomas?
Do you have any thoughts on your mix of housing, or when you're going to have that more tied down, and types of housing mixes for the RP?
that more tied down, and types of housing mixes for the RP area?
I think the answer to that is no.
Okay.
This is, the, one of the reasons that we were asked to revise the proffers the way we did was because we don't know what the market's going to build. This is going to take years, as you know, to build out. But one of the things we also know, and this county has seen some plain evidence of it, I'm doing more age-restricted housing than any other kind of development in Virginia right now. And those of us that both have hair and are getting gray or thinking about that, I suppose to some extent, I just did a project in Warrington, a memory care facility in Warrington, we're doing a large age-restricted community in Manassas Park, that's the marketplace right now. Would that be true, however, in 10 or 15 years? No. I mean, our age cohort may not be here, it may be an entirely different, different market at that point, because we are the mouse moving through the demographic snake since the Second World War. And so we just don't know. And so I think it's fair to say that that's not known, we would like to have the market determine that. And we did take the limitation on garden apartments off, because I cannot remember which member of the Board of Supervisors insisted on it. We didn't like it then, we don't like it now, so we've asked it to be removed.
Anyone else? Anyone?
I'm not going anywhere, Madam Chairman.
Sir, thank you. This is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this rezoning? If so, come forward and give us your name and magisterial district. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing portion.
Well, kick it off then. I'm fine with the rezoning pretty much as presented. I'd still have heartburn over this reservation, though, because before, the county was getting nine acres to use, now it's going to be reserved. Who knows what the price will be at the time? We didn't take it, we were compensated $200,000 in lieu of it, now it's nothing. That portion has, like I said, some real heartburn for me, and I think it needs to be discussed before you get to the Board of Supervisors. I think that might be a sticking point, so, just to give you a heads-up.
Madam Chair, I totally, totally agree with that. I think it should be dedicated and not just reserved. Because the price, if they are successful, the price is going to continue to go up, and five years from now, it could be considerably more than what it is now. The other part that concerns me a little bit is, I wish we had a little more specificity in the housing type. I know they don't want to tie themselves down too much, but they're going to have to start building something, and they're going to start with garden apartments, or single-family houses, or townhouses. I do like the layout, actually better than the previous layout, because I think the commercial provides a good buffer to the intersection 81 for the housing in the RP area. So I think, I think the layout is an improvement over what was, what we had before.
Madam Chairman, I kind of go along with Gary and Roger. I do have heartburn also about the reservation versus dedication. But I'd like to say that, yes, I read 160-plus pages, and yes, I got confused, and yes, I understood about 25% of it. And all I've got to say is this, if some one person or a group of people can keep this project on track and figure out everything that's going on at the same time, more power to you. I think this is something that's greatly needed, as far as the location and the transportation part of it. But my only grievance is, I'm greedy, that's what got us in trouble in the country, being greedy, is the dedication versus the reservation.
Thank you. Other comments that would be helpful to the applicant?
Madam Chairman, I supported approval without the dedication, and believe that the additional commercial is a net positive contribution, and so I would support approval without the dedication.
Okay.
Second?
Any other comments? How about down here to my left? You said?
I think, from my perspective, Madam Chair, I'm generally comfortable with, with the rezoning and what's been put forward. I certainly appreciate the concern about the shift from dedication to reservation, but I also recognize the reasoning behind the change from an applicant perspective. I'm not sure, for a project of this scale, if that really causes me that much concern, given the tremendous upside, I think, to the community from a overall transportation network and from a land use perspective, but I certainly appreciate the sentiments of my fellow commissioners. I'm also generally comfortable with giving as much flexibility as we can relative to the residential component. I think my only concern about pinning it down is that there's not a real, clear plan at this point for the residential component. We may be, you know, kind of hamstringing some of the creativity that could come forward with a site like this. So, that being said, my curiosity is if there's a, from a fellow commissioner perspective, a particular product type or housing type that you don't want to see, or you do want to see, or is there a mix that we anticipate, because I personally, looking at this, couldn't tell you what the right mix would be until it moves forward. I'd like it to be something that's got a little more density to take advantage of this, of this location and the intensity of commercial development, but, you know, I'm just curious if there's something that doesn't work, or you prefer to see or not see.
My concern is, I'd hate to see 1,500 townhouses, or 1,000 townhouses and 600 apartments. I'd like to see a mix, and I guess that's what I was looking for, was some kind of a commitment, that yes, we're going to get a mix, and not just one housing type. I mean, I wouldn't, I really wouldn't even want to see 100% single-family house.
Right.
I'd like to see a mix and not just one.
So I guess is the thought process, really, that they commit to a mix, not necessarily specifying what that mix is, but a mix, single-family, attached, multifamily, something along those lines. I'd be more comfortable with that, yeah. All right, thanks, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Yes?
I was not around when this application came to you the first time, so essentially, I saw it, or was seeing it for the first time, and based on what I've read, and I read all the pages that were mentioned, I would, I'd like this application. I'm comfortable with, with having something in there regarding a mix of housing. I think that, I really don't have an issue with the reservation versus the dedication, because I think it's all balancing out. I like this, I like the way the commercial is oriented towards the interstate and the arterial highway. I think it's a good application. Thank you.
Anyone else?
After listening to what everybody said, I would kind of agree with Chris, but I also think that these people will have a hard time with what kind of residential's going in there. The market's going to tell them what to do anyway, they're not going to say they can do something now, and they can't build it five years from now, and say what's going to happen. And as far as the dedication's concerned, if what Mr. Foote said is true, and I'm sure it is, if they took a lot more land than what they anticipated, I can see why they feel the way they do about the reservation. So I'm real good with this subdivision.
Any other comments? May I ask the applicant if they would like to respond to what's been said here?
Ma'am, not unless you need us.
Thank you. Seems to me that we're here to make a decision.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of rezoning number 12-15.
Second?
Has been a motion to recommend approval of rezoning 12-15. Any other comments? Mr. Moan?
Moan, yes.
Dunlap, yes.
Triplett, yes.
Bowden, yes.
There's a lot of good about this, but there's, is some concerning items. Yes.
Oates with, I'd be yes with reservations.
Manuel, yes.
Ed Roji, yes.
Marston, yes.
Hunter, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This will go to the board on January the 27th. Thank you. Our next item is a, on information, discussion item for the commission, is the 2016-2017 Capital Improvement Plan. CIP is a prioritized list of capital projects requested by various county departments and agencies, and the plan is created as an informational component of the 2030 Comprehensive Plan. Mr. Ruddy?
Thank you, again, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. This is our time of year when we get into the Capital Improvement Plan for the county, very important planning document that creates that link between the county's comprehensive plan, activities that are occurring in the county, and of course, the county's budget. We run it through the Comprehensive Plans and Programs Committee. We did so on the 14th of December. The Comp Plan Committee heard from folks with the Frederick County Public Schools, Parks and Recreation, and of course, we discussed the other components of the CIP. The Comp Plan Committee recommended endorsement of this year's CIP, and found that the projects were in conformance with the comprehensive plan, and that's why we're here this evening, because it's the Planning Commission's opportunity for discussion on the CIP. Any comments that the commission would like to include, we'll move then on to the Board of Supervisors as we have a discussion with them, and hopefully, we'll get direction from the board to move it forward to a public hearing at some point between now and the county's budget process. With that, go into a few of the details of the mechanics of the CIP, and what changes, minor changes, adjustments were made this year. CIP for 2016 and 17 contains 89 projects, that's very consistent with recent years. I've highlighted that in 2015, there were 88 projects, 92 in 14, and 86 back in 13. So while there have been some adjustments, generally, the projects remain somewhat consistent with those that have been in here in recent years. It continues to reinforce the connection between the comprehensive plan, future rezoning applications, one that we saw here this evening being an example. It identifies needs and locations associated with the continued growth of the community. So to that end, the CIP is a very important document. And what ultimately the CIP does, it provides some, a tool, and some guidance, and a connection to the county's budget process, and we look to have that be the same again this year. Couple of changes, minor changes, were made just in the structure, highlighting a couple of columns to recognize that. The CIP contains the same table that we've used in recent years, and it's on the screen to your left and part of your agenda, and we don't, we can zoom on in if we need to look at particular projects, but of course, it's a three-page table that includes all of the projects that have been identified by the different departments, commissions, and agencies, in no order for the Planning Commission, other than that that was presented by those entities. It includes Frederick County Public Schools, Parks and Recreation. The second page includes the Regional Library, transportation projects, the Winchester Regional Airport, and the final page includes county administration projects and fire and rescue projects, which also include those individual fire and rescue companies. I mentioned a couple of minor highlights, if you will, in this year's compared to previous years, and on the screen to your left, I've pointed out that the first column, 2016-17, which is the next fiscal year, just has a highlight to it, recognizing that projects for which funding will be sought should be those that are identified within that column. And perhaps to add greater connection to the county's comprehensive plan, I've highlighted that an additional column has been added for long-range comprehensive plan projects, to give those long-range projects a voice, if you will, in the CIP, but not to make it part of the five-year, typical five-year funding window. Again, the importance of the CIP is to identify projects associated with the needs of the growing community, and hopefully find some way to, to implement them, obtain them, and actually construct them, but not all of the projects identified may fall within that five-year window. So the CIP also includes four maps. The first map on the screen to your left locates county administration, airport, library, and fire and rescue facilities. The second map includes Frederick County Public Schools, existing and potential school locations. The third map deals with Parks and Recreation and new potential Parks and Recreation locations. In addition, identifies those existing locations throughout the county. And the fourth map has been just updated with date-wise, no particular changes, but it addresses those transportation projects that have consistently been part of the county's Usually, we just highlight a couple of different projects, a couple of different changes, and recognize that the airport continues to move forward with land acquisition around, of parcels around the airport to support their future operations. Schools in the past have had projects on here that have moved forward, most recently, of course, Frederick County Middle School, which is under construction upon Route 522 North. Parks and Recreation have projects that are moving around, too. We have here with us this evening some representatives of Frederick County Public Schools, Mr. Wayne Lee, Ms. Dorndorf, and also Mr. John Tuchel. Frederick County Parks and Recreation, should you have any additional questions of them in the future, but just pointing out a couple of highlights, Fourth High School remains a third-ranking project, if you will, for the schools, has switched with the improvements to Ayla Middle School. The school's component of the CIP has reduced the number of projects in general, but again, it maintains the Fourth High School as their third priority, their number-one priority, as I kind of highlight here, is their elementary school, number 12, new elementary school, and the addition and renovation to the Armel Elementary School. So again, some switches and changes, but that recognizes the Frederick County Public Schools' highlighted projects, if you will. I mentioned Parks and Recreation, the northwest portion of Sharando Park is a, is a new project or a focus of their CIP, and also a continued focus of Frederick County Parks and Recreation, their swimming and indoor aquatics facility, and also improvements to the swimming facilities within their park system. One note that we've put throughout, and I apologize, it doesn't come up too clearly on there, but the Comp Plan Committee wanted to recognize that the map also provided identifying locations for future school sites. So when we looked at the table with regards to schools, we wanted to make sure that we were always referred back to the maps that have been provided, to ensure that people were aware of the future locations of potential locations of high schools, middle schools, elementary schools here in the county. An additional new project that was included under county administration is one from the county registrar, and that's for voting equipment that would be necessary for upcoming elections and changes that are to the standards and requirements associated with that. Again, new project that was added. Transportation, Public Works, library, airport generally remain the same. Under fire and rescue, we've pointed out that there are new company requests. A good number of those requests deal with requests that are typically over $100,000, and that's the finance department, the finance policy, if you will, that capital improvement projects above $100,000 in cost would qualify. Several years ago, we created an additional category for fire and rescue, fire and rescue capital equipment that may have fell below the $100,000 threshold. We haven't had any projects or requests within that in recent years, however, this year we do, and I'll point out that that is, there are three projects, and all three of them are from the Middletown Volunteer Fire and Rescue Company. Again, the Comp Plan Committee reviewed this, had some discussion with the schools and Parks and Recreation, found it in conformance with the comprehensive plan. We're seeking comments from the Planning Commission here tonight that can be forwarded on to the Board of Supervisors as we continue with this year's CIP process. I noted a link on the screen to your left, and also in your agenda, and that is through the county's website with the plans connection, and that's where we have all of the information for, that was submitted for this year's CIP. We wanted to make sure that not only do you have the CIP, which is pretty lengthy in of itself, but all of the individual requests from the departments, entities, and fire and rescue companies, too. So that's available on the county's website at fcvad.us, plans under this year's capital improvement. So, be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Any questions, if Mike?
I guess maybe just one.
Mr. Yerger?
Mike, what kind of request would Middletown Fire Department have to have that would be so much more than the rest of them?
Well, they don't, it's not necessarily so much more than the rest of them. I think they're perhaps just aware of their, their future needs, perhaps, and they understand the need to request through the CIP process and identify them through the CIP process. That also gives them the ability, should rezonings and things of that nature occur in the general area down there, that, there's that connection, and they may be able to receive some funding for them. But I think it's just that they are aware of their needs. They have some projects identified, and it's important to put those into the CIP, whether the funds are there for them presently or not.
Any other questions or comments?
Mike, the public schools, did I hear you right, said the Ailer improvement to move to second on the priority list instead of third? Is that...
Well, if we would like, we can...
I can ask one of those guys.
I think actually, there's a joint, number one, number two, and then number four is actually that project. There's a good opportunity to welcome Mr. Orndorf.
Don't want to see him fall asleep out there.
Madam Chairwoman, Commissioners, Commissioner Kenny, your question...
You moved Ailer improvements to second on your priority list instead of third? Is that...
That is correct.
Okay.
And part of the reasoning of the board's decision to do that was, as we complete the new Frederick County Middle School, there are some changes in instructional delivery systems. And as we revisit this, many of these projects that are on here have been on the Capital Improvement Plan for a significant period of time. So you have buildings that have needed renovation. We're starting to come out of a recession, so Board of Supervisors had to wrestle with a recessionary period, and many of these projects that we would have renovated, had we been able to, need to be revisited. Systems that have failed, in some cases, we've had to go in and replace. And so, to scope that project, we need to benefit from opening of the new Frederick County Middle School, and take a look at that entire original scoping. So it was prudent to move it.
Is there a cost associated? Do you have a cost? It says...
Well...
I don't want to put you on the spot, but...
Until you do the scoping, as you well know, and work with an A&amp;E firm to give you a figure, and that's the reason those figures have been pulled off.
Okay.
Because when you re-scope it, you've got to bring in the expertise, and then you need the cost estimator. So it...
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions while you're up? Don't think so. Good to see you. Thank you. Anybody else, comments? I, Mike, what will happen after we see this? What is, what is the motion on, on this going forward?
Well, if there are any comments to be included and points, we can forward that on to the Board of Supervisors, and then hopefully, we'll get some direction from the Board of Supervisors to continue the CIP through the public hearing process. If we do so, then it'll be coming back to the Planning Commission, as customary, for a public hearing. Planning Commission will see it and, consistent with the recommendation of the Comp Plan Committee, hopefully find it in conformance with the comprehensive plan.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Everybody all right with that? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mike. Nice job. Okay, I do believe we're at the end of our agenda. I will share with you that we do not have a, an agenda for the 20th of January, so we will need to cancel that meeting, so...
So moved.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Another comment that we make usually, the first of the year, we're thinking about when we're going to have our retreat in the snow in February. And we thought it would be a very valuable idea to think about that a little differently. And I think the most important thing and comments made to me, and I appreciate it, is that you know that we, we're looking for a director. And our, the, if you will, the process for that is underway, and I know that there's activity next week regarding the applicants. And so, we have a process that is going places. And so, my suggestion is that we wait until we have a director in place, and that we wait, that we give that director some time to gain knowledge about us, if not already known to the person. And we'll, we'll get to a retreat, knowing that we're going to deal with a comp plan. And maybe beautiful, springy April might be a good time to think about that, so we'll keep you posted. I think that's it.
Move for adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you all very much.
[inaudible][1778.53]